Hold off.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Happy Halloween. We do have a quorum present this morning with all five commissioners in attendance. And we do, I guess, need an approval of the agenda for the special meeting minutes, or it says special meeting. I would entertain a motion accordingly.
Sure moved.
Push my Commissioner Richards, do we have a second?
Second.
My Commissioner Jones, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion's unanimous.
The item before us this morning is discussion and approval of the scoping comments to amend the Rock Springs Resource Management Plan. Eric and staff have been preparing comments for discussion and consideration today. Just as a reminder for the public, the BLM published a notice of intent to amend the Rock Springs RMP. Back on, well, the public scoping period began on October 2nd. And as such, there's supposed to be a 30-day comment period, which brings us to today and the reason for the special meeting. We've since learned as of yesterday that there's a good chance that that will be extended. And part of that process is supposed to allow for a public meeting and with the government shutdown taking place, that hasn't occurred. And so the information we received through the WCCA, through conversation with the BLM at the state office is that this will likely push back to potentially December. However, we have not officially received or seen the press release go out yet. So we're marching forward as if we're going to follow the original timelines, I believe. We'll see what comes about with that. And so I guess with that, Eric, if you want to kind of give us a rundown, we'll sort through it.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what you have before you is a letter to the State Director concerning our scoping comments for the amendment to the Rock Springs Resource Management Plan. The content that you, that the letter starts with is addressing some of the meetings that we had back, basically back in June, when the process, we attend, all attended a cooperators meeting to discuss it. There were some concerns from staff when we did speak with some of their staff that it was going to be very limited in scope as far as the amendment goes. And with what we understand that when you do look and reopen the evaluation of areas of critical environmental concern, you effectively change other parts of that plan that need to be changed because you have things that are tied to it, such as right-of-way exclusion areas, visual resource management areas, and that also need to be changed. And so our concern moving forward is we made that clear. And so I'll get into a little bit of that. The other thing that concerns are the vertical communication that's coming from DC as far as the executive orders and the secretarial orders and that they're being followed. You know, Doug Burg, President Trump issued executive orders of deregulation. And then following that were Doug Burgum's Secretary of Interior's secretarial orders to also look in ways of deregulating to open up at things for energy development. Our concern is, is that, that there's a disconnect that is happening between DC and the state and the field office. And we wanted to make sure that State Director's aware of that and then also DC's aware of it. So a lot of the content in the first page or so is addressing deregulation policy. And we just want to make sure that when we get into the RMP amendment process, that those executive orders and secretarial orders, that amendment and those changes are in alignment. The other meat, the meat of the actual letter is in, starts on the third page where we are actually, and what we've been asked several times, and we've done this, this will be the second or third time we've done this, as the chairman has stated in previous meetings and such, that what we would like to see in the resource management plan, and we make it very clear. And we're stating those different areas that are designated, whether they should be a special recreation management area, as we do in that first bullet point. And what we do is we also state what we're okay with. And there were things in the resource management plan that Sweetwater County was actually in alignment with, such as Little Mountain was probably the biggest one that we were okay with it being a special recreation management area. So that is highlighted there. Kilpecker Sand Dudes is a special recreation management area. And then Pine Mountain and Sugarloaf remain a management area, which we were okay with. Then we got into the ACECs on the next following page where we get into that they are modified back to their original state. And the probably the biggest one that had a huge enlargement was Steamboat Mountain, which went from 439, actually 47,000 acres to 80 to 439,081 acres. So probably that one had a huge effect. The other thing that we saw in the record of decision was that giant visual resource management class two area. And then the right-of-way exclusion area that was very large, we also brought that, are bringing that to the attention to them also. So we list out all the ACECs to reverse back to their original states. Same with the National Historic Trails. We had concerns about that five-mile buffer that was in there. We're asking it to go back to the quarter mile. Visual Resource Management, right-of-ways exclusion, fluid mineral leasing, solid leasable minerals, saleable minerals, and locatable minerals. We're asking those to be in alignment with the changes that we would like to see so that they're not these giant right-of-way exclusion areas. Because that's going to have a profound effect on some of the county roads we have out through the red desert. Because they'll be in a right-of-exclusion area. And what does that mean? If we ever have to improve or realign those roads and we're in a right-of-exclusion area, that creates problems for us at the county. So. That's what I have, Mr. Chairman, before you. Again, we have not confirmed, we're hearing the same that they will, by law, they need to have a public scoping meeting that's open to the public. They have not had that. So they are going to be required to do that. So more than likely, this thing will be extended. But we haven't heard any things. We're here today, just as the chairman stated, because you go to the BLM website, there's a federal shutdown. It still says November 3rd, 4th, whatever it is, is the deadline. So that's why we're here today, Mr. Chairman. I'll turn it back to you.
Yeah, thanks, Eric. I got on there and it doesn't list November 3rd anymore. It just said it'll be extended 30 days, you know, to allow for an informal meeting. So it's kind of, I'm not sure, you know, what the proper avenue is. I think we've always kind of
Yeah.
treaded lightly and tried to plan ahead. And I will continue to do that, but it's confusing and it feels a little, yeah. Putting the cart before the horse, so to speak, but in truth, we're not because this is, you know, we've written these several times. I think this is a unique opportunity, you know, throughout this amendment process to hone in on, you know, the, the items that you just mentioned in regards to some of the different management actions and, you know, classifications that we've argued all along. And so, yeah, I think you touched on that good and I don't know, it's a unique opportunity. I think there's probably a little bit of work that we can clean up on this. I don't know. I guess we don't know. We don't know until the press release comes out as far as timelines and deadlines. And if we submit now, if we're going to have to resubmit or what that looks like. But commissioners, I'd open it up for discussion or thoughts on the letters that were prepared.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jones. First, appreciate all of your work, Eric and John, and then Chairman going through the wee hours to rework it how you see fit. That was a lot of work on everybody's part. So I appreciate that. I don't know if we just want to jump in and, and compare the two or what, but I guess kind of, kind of a general statement. I'm, I'm very much in favor of a strongly worded letter. I think the amount of money we've spent just in your time and John's time writing letters is ridiculous, to say the least. I have other words I'd like to use, but a little bit of my wits end. And I think we've been very professional and we will continue to be professional. But I think most of the letters have been along the lines of here's what we want, here's what we don't want. We'd like to work with you. We encourage open communication, things like that. And it's gotten us nowhere, absolutely nowhere. I kind of feel like we've been treated like the unwanted stepchild. And Frank Franklin tired of it. And this may be our last shot at this. Who knows? Obviously, nothing's clear about how things are going to go forward. But I think this is our one shot. And I think a firm letter is, is the least we could do right now when I say the word firm. Because I think we have a situation where we have a local field office who knows this RMP inside and out, as they should. We have an interim state director who does not know this RMP inside and out, understandably, because she's interim and hasn't been involved. So we don't know what we don't know. So it's understandable that she wouldn't be as knowledgeable. And likewise, anybody above her is not knowledgeable in the RMP. So this letter is being sent to the acting state director and above. That's our intention anyway, is for those people to see it. Of course, the field office will see it as well, but so we need to be very clear and have a very firm stance from the acting state director on up that we've had enough, enough. We, the, the current administration is very clear about the direction this is supposed to go. And our very first cooperators meeting did not really follow that path exactly. And this is our chance to clean that up, or at least have a shot at bringing that to light so that the people on the higher levels know that there's some serious missteps here.
Mr. Chairman, I totally concur with our, our junior commissioner. I'm so proud of you for digging in and being so knowledgeable, so fast, really. After so many years of beating this, getting beat over the head with this. I totally agree. We need to be firm. And I, I really appreciate how you focus the letter on exactly what it is we want. I think that's very strong and very good. So thank you. I know you guys put a lot of brain power into this.
Mr. Slaughter.
Mr. Chairman. I, when I first read the letter that was presented to us by staff, I felt like it was very good. I then received the letter which you had amended, and I thought it was very good. So in reading them, the, the question came to my mind, is it something where we want to take a stronger type stance? Or do we want to try and take somewhat, a somewhat softer stance, seem that we are more amenable to working in the future with the BLM? As you and, as the chairman and Commissioner Jones have been lead, the lead in this issue, you know, I, I respect both, both of your opinions on this. I, I think both of you are more well-versed than I am in this. And so it, it came back to, to me, do we want to take the firmer stance or do we want to take a little bit softer stance? I still am not sure at this point in time. After listening to Commissioner Jones, I, I believe, only with the understanding that he's got and the frustration that he feels and, and the comments of Commissioner Tolman, I, I could see that the stronger stance would probably be what would be the desire of this commission at this point in time. So I, I'm very much in favor of that moving forward, if that's the, the feeling of this board. I, I too, I'm somewhat frustrated with what's gone on. Not somewhat, I'm very frustrated with what's gone on here. I think that we have tried to cooperate in as many ways as we can. We've tried to give the best feel for what Sweetwater County's residents and what our feelings are in this process. So I, I think this letter is extremely important. The fact that it's going to the administration's higher levels, I think, is, is key. And therefore, I, I think, Mr. Chairman, I, I would probably lean towards a little harder language in the letter than, than moving towards softer language.
Mr. Richards.
Chairman. This is difficult because we, because we always want to be pleasant in our dealings with the federal government. But at a federal partners meeting, those very same people that we attempt to be pleasant with took, took a very aggressive tone with us and kind of made it clear to us how, how they felt about our pleasant participation in the process. Everything we've asked for has basically been ignored. This entire process was fixed from the start, with the start being the day that they, they published the, the proposed DIS, the draft DIS, and chose an alternative that we had been instructed by the Rock Springs Field Office Manager to ignore because it was just a bookend. We have attempted diplomacy all the way through this. And I think we've reached the point where we need to be not rude, but blunt. And, and I, and I lean towards that. When I see strong language at this point, I'm not thinking that it's rude, it's confrontation, it's blunt. We need to tell the interim state director exactly how we feel. And, and myself, I feel ignored. In the, in the first cooperators meeting for this process, they again tried to give us what I felt was improper instruction on what they were going to allow us to even do. And it, and it took a couple of questions for them to backtrack and say, oh, no, 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 that's not what we're saying. But they said it. And they continue to do that through this process. And I, and I think it's, I think it's really worthy that we, we make it clear to the interim state director that we're unhappy and we do that through language. So I, I, I think I stand with our, our, our junior commissioner and Mr. Slaughter down there that it's time to take a strong stance, but with good grammar.
Mr. Chairman, I just have to say, we are so lucky to have you as chairman. I didn't mean to skip over you because your English skills and your ability to, to work your words is just amazing. So I can't thank you enough for taking the, taking the lead in all of our correspondence and making sure it's professional and correct and, and as strong as it can be. So I appreciate your edits.
Well, on that, I mean, just the, some of the suggested edits that I had was mainly grammatical or just making it flow better. I think the message is very similar. Obviously, I soften the blow. But I'm no stranger to accountability and I have no problem delivering a punch, you know, that's backed with factual and instructive criticism. I think we have done that. I think we've done it more than we have discussed today. I mean, almost every letter we've addressed has had extreme displeasure with that. So the idea of the opportunity through an amendment process and, you know, request to work together with the local office to enforce that, you know, is where I took that approach of, okay, let's put everything aside and let's get to work. But we've also done that. And we've been basically excluded. I mean, the last meeting was in June. So I, I think maybe a combination of both, kind of what we've got working on can easily be achievable. I don't think either of them are wrong. I, I think they're maybe just need a little fine tune. But I think the message is more or less the same. And I think you and I have anyone, and certainly you guys are sick of it, tired of it. I mean, this has been two plus years of back and forth and write this letter and no, that's not good enough. Try again, try this. I mean, it's all over the place. We can't get any direction locally. We're not getting any direction from the state and they're blaming it on, you know, the federal government not having enough direction. So where do you start? Where do you end? It's, it's been a challenge and we're not going to give up. So I'm all about, you know, tweaking it to make our message be known. I'm just trying to also realize that we are willing to work regardless of political indifference. And we have no problem sitting at the table and having those tough conversations. So I think we can tweak that if everyone, I mean, it seems like hearing it right, everyone feels similarly.
You're the Harry Potter, so go for it.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richards.
Would it, would it be appropriate to move the approval of what we have labeled here as Keaton's clean copy? Pending no change in the, in, in the deadline, with instruction to staff that if the deadline approaches without change to get it filed by the deadline, however, if the deadline is changed, then we have more time for, for all of us to, to work on, on a better, a better product. It's a great product that we have. The time always makes things better. And I know, I know staff would like to not be time crunched in a response.
Sure.
But we have a, we have a great document here that we can work with, that we can submit as is and it'll, it'll do its job. But if, but if it can be tweaked a little bit better with a few more days, I'm sure everybody would appreciate that.
Yeah. And I talked with John this morning in regards to that. And John, if you want to add, but we were thinking more or less, you know, approving the, the context of the draft that we've got prepared here with some major or some minor, you know, grammatical and explanatory, you know, changes that would allow us to either authorize myself to approve or however we want to do that, which would obviously later be ratified. But John, go ahead.
So there's two parts to the letter. The most important part, I think for you as a board, to be able to identify that you're in agreement with is the substantive part, which is the explanation of the deregulation or max use alternative. And so as long as I think you are all in agreement with that component, I think that you could make a motion to approve the content and give the Chairman the discretion to modify the, essentially what would be the explanation part of the letter or the procedural part of the letter. And I think that's, that's the part that leads up to the substance of the letter. So, and so, Mr. Chairman, I think, I think you have the ability to, one option, I think, is like Commissioner Richards is identifying. But you could also say, you could also take a motion to approve the content of the letter and allow the Chairman to make any grammatical or explanatory adjustments to the letter.
I'm good with that. I, Chairman, I, whichever one works best for you, I'm, I'm good with.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Chairman, so when, when would we be allowed to make some suggested changes? I have a couple that aren't major, but just see how that fits into the role here.
Yeah. And I, I guess that, what do we, what is the plan on that? Are we still going to plan on submitting? What was the deadline? Was it the 3rd?
It's Monday by midnight.
Okay.
Okay. So that's the deadline. Right. As far as we know, until a press release comes out, press release comes out today.
Right.
Then we can, we got a little bit more time there. It would be behoove us to definitely stay ahead of the game. We, we always seem to be, and it's not, no fault to our, these time crunches always happen because they don't give you enough time. And so now, just like to stay ahead of the game, get that letter going so that when they get that in DC, they're like, before even the combat period, let's say it's extended to December 2nd, we'd like definitely way before then to get it submitted so that they know what's going on. We know we're on limited time here to get that, even the amendment process done. So.
So Mr. Chairman and, and Eric, so the Chairman did see on their webpage that it was extended. And so I, I would be surprised. I mean, to me, that is a clear indication, more than a clear indication that it is extended. And so I don't know there's an immediate need to have it submitted. I think that your, your point that you can still be ahead of the game in submitting that in the next week or whatever the case may be.
Give us enough time.
So I, I, I think you're, the main goal, I think, would be to, again, make sure that the board is in alignment with the substance. And then to be able to make sure that, that the grammatical and explanatory process is consistent with what the, what the board is, has communicated. And I think that can be done in a, you know, without having to do it today and over the weekend, kind of a scenario. So again, as you, however you as a board determine, but I, I don't think the immediacy is, is, is much on the situation as it was.
We could, yeah.
And just to be clear, the e-planning site states that the public scoping period begins October 2nd, 2025, and will, and will be extended beyond 30 days to allow BLM to schedule an in-person public meeting. While the agency is accepting public comments, BLM is unable to address those comments until the lapse in appropriation ends. So.
Oh, it's extended.
I have a question though. The BLM website is kicking everything back. I don't know about the e-site, but the regular office, if you send something in, it kicks it back. It's that down.
To the regular email?
Yeah.
Okay.
So unless you could get through the e-planning site, there's no way you can submit anything to them unless you mail it to them.
Okay. So I think to answer your question, I mean, as long as the content is agreeable by all, suggestions met, it should be achievable still.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think most of the content I'm, I'm good with. I'd like to add back in a few of the things that, that Eric and John put in that you crossed out. But that would be my suggestion, just a couple of words that couple of words I'd change.
That's terrible. Mr. Slaughter?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would concur that we, we work towards a, a final product. But I do want to say, I failed to say in my previous comments, you know, I know how hard staff has worked on this. I've been down to have other meetings with them. And they're either working on industrial siding or the RMP constantly. But the, the work that the Chair did on this, I think actually goes above and beyond. He did an excellent job. It's an excellent product. And the time that he took going over extremely difficult subject matter, I truly appreciate. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for what you did on that.
Yes, until 1:30 in the morning.
I just, you know, it could be our last shot. And so I just want to make sure that
It's all good.
When we hand that off in DC, we're proud and confident and ready to play ball, right?
Well, Mr. Chairman, we want five signatures, right? So that's important.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other feedback, comment on the process or the letter?
We're just lucky that we have a team that understands and is willing to tackle this because this commission has not been this involved in the past, except through CLG.
Takes a team, no doubt.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing. Sorry. This is aside the letter, but when we do have a final product, I think it would be important, and if we could schedule a virtual call, whatever, with Wyoming Commissioners Association with, you know, at least a couple of commissioners just to, so we're giving, you know, when we have a final product that we can share with them, that would be great. Also, if, yeah, that, that, that's my big thing. And the Governor's Office, if that's possible too, whether it's with Nolan, whomever, just so we can make sure everybody's on the same page. So that doesn't have to happen immediately, but just when the letter's done. So.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Tristan from WCCA reached out yesterday and provided their comments and he asked that we review them and provide any feedback before they send them out to other counties. So I just told them, once we get ours figured out, we'll pitch based with you. But I think that's, that's good, just so that we can, you know, make our, our thoughts known, I guess, to the other
Yeah.
players with it and certainly the Governor's Office. So we can make that happen.
Okay.
Any other comments? Commissioner Jones?
Just one final note. I doubt that anybody from WCCA is sitting in on this, but if you are, thank you for what you're doing. You are a vital partner in everything we do.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, John.
Just clarifying a little bit what Eric is saying there. When he's, when he's saying the, he's asking you as a board to consider getting together with the County Commissioners Association and the Governor's Office to make sure everybody's on the same page. The, the sort of the short version and the procedural way of saying that is that to try to ensure that there is an alternative that isn't necessarily a middle ground alternative, but a maximum use or deregulation alternative to see if, to try to get everybody on the same page in that regard. So that, I think that's part of the way, the reason Eric is asking for you to consider that, that action.
Sure. Makes sense. Anything else? Let's see if I can screw this up here. So I'd entertain a motion to approve the content of the draft scoping comments for the Rock Springs Resource Management Plan Amendment and allow for the Chairman to make any grammatical or explanatory changes and adjustments as needed, while authorizing all to sign the final product, I guess. Is that good, John?
Yep.
Yeah.
Still moved.
Motion by Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second? By Commissioner Tolman? Any further Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pos nay? Motion's unanimous. And I guess we'll wait and see on the
Yeah.
press release if it comes out. And, you know, obviously, anything we do will ratify at a regular meeting. But appreciate everyone's time today and for getting dressed up for the meeting. And happy Halloween and have a good weekend. Thanks, all. This meeting stands adjourned.